Okay, the time is now five o'clock and we will begin the administrative portion of our agenda. If you haven't already done so, please silence your cell phones. And also, if you haven't picked up a copy of the agenda there at the back, and also the sign is in the sheet. So at this time, the first order of business will be a public hearing for the rezoning of 314 Bingham Street. Is there anyone here to speak for or against on the rezoning of 314 Bingham Street? There being none, I'll close this public hearing. Next would be a public hearing for properties with dangerous buildings or public nuisance. The first would be 717 Bermuda Street. Is there anyone here to speak for or against 717 Bermuda Street? There being none. The next would be 245 Atlas Street. Is there anyone here to speak for or against 245, correction, Atlas Street? There being none. The next is 8 Franklin Avenue. Anyone here to speak for or against 8 Franklin Avenue? Also, there being none. The next one will be 318 Westview Drive. Anyone to speak for or against 318 Westview Drive? Also, there being none. The last and final one would be 597 Eufaula Street. Anyone to speak for or against 597 Eufaula Street? There being none, I'll close this public hearing. The next item of business will be employee recognition by our mayor.
Yeah, there's hardly a day goes by that I don't get a compliment on fire EMS police or some other employee. It's one thing to hear from our own people, but it's a little different when it's from outsiders looking in and complimenting our staff. And this happened a while back. It was already presented to her, but I wanted to bring her here, recognize her here where all the city council and everybody here would see it. But Ms. Kristi Clark, she was selected by Flowers Hospital as a 2025 EMS Provider of the Year for this year, and that's just a big deal for somebody from Lower Ozark to win that. But we thank you so much and thank you for what you do, and I think everyone will get a pitch right there. And I know y'all have been swamped the last few days.
Yes. Very good.
And thank you, Ms. Clark. Next, we will review our agenda. After which, we will allow our comments from the mayor, council department heads, comments from the floor on agenda items, comments, questions or concerns on subjects not on the agenda, and then we'll recess prior to our voting session, which will begin at 5:30 or immediately following this administrative meeting. Counsel, are there any questions concerning the minutes from our regular council meeting held on June the 3rd?
Are we gonna look at seven, eight, nine, and 10 on the other side of the page?
We just started.
We're not there yet.
We will get there later. Any comments or questions concerning the minutes from our June the 3rd council meeting? Next would be to set the agenda. Are the council members comfortable with setting the agenda as presented? Next item would be an ordinance for the rezoning of 314 Bingham Street from I-1 to R-25. Grant must be in, if you can come in.
It's probably located in a desert zone, and we got to buy her for it, and she can't do anything around that until we get the rezoning.
All right, thank you. Counsel, any comments? Or you just go ahead and just take it?
I drove by over there.
All right, thanks. Next item would be a resolution for the declaration of properties with dangerous buildings as a public nuisance. Those are the properties that we just had the public hearing on. 717 Bermuda Street, 245 Atlas Street, 8 Franklin Avenue, 318 West Street Drive, and 597 Eufaula Street. Counsel, any comments, questions, or concerns regarding these properties?
I didn't see any work.
Okay, thank you. Right, thank you. Next item would be a first reading application, 010 Lounge Retail Liquor Class 1 and 990, tobacco only. Applicant Cloud 334 LLC, trade name Cloud 334, 130 North Port Square, Ozark, Alabama. Owner Kimberly D. Griffin, 188 Bivens Drive, Ozark. Michael is on to speak regarding this.
Well, this is part of the council objection to the first reading of this new establishment located between the old house and ads and the way it's shot down there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gray. And we will take this as a first reading.
That's correct.
Counsel, any questions regarding this first reading application? Thank you. Next item would be to approve a $13,000 Alabama Tourism Department Legislative Grant for Ozark Karate and Music Festival and Claybank Gem Marie Arts and Crafts Festival. Ah, the, uh...
He's not here. Yeah, he's not here tonight. He had an appointment that he had to go to. So this was a grant that was applied for from the Alabama Tourism Department Legislative Grant, and they've notified us that we are able to apply for that and get $13,000, much needed to help the coffers of the city of Ozark.
Yes, indeed. Counsel, any comments, questions, or concerns regarding this grant?
It's great, you got it.
Okay, thank you. Next item would be a resolution for conflicts of interest. That would be Chris, our city clerk, and Holly, if she was here.
Yeah, Holly's here. I'll let her go first. So probably...
So a few weeks ago, I submitted an application for growing Alabama funds for some development on one of the airport parcels, and required with the application is the city conflicts of interest policy. So I submitted the same one from the city handbook that I submitted two years ago for the same grant that worked fine. They now have different requirements for the way that policy is done. So ours was really for the city employee handbook. It did not include elected officials and city appointed board members, and it needed to include that. So this is just a revision of this policy. This will not necessarily go in the handbook, but it will just apply to basically say that if you are employed by the city, if you are an elected official of the city, if something arises that you feel is a conflict of interest, that you will speak up and recuse yourself or submit a letter explaining the conflict. So it's just a good policy to have in place. Most every grant that I've been involved with lately has required one, so I'm sure it's something we will need again. Yeah. Yep.
Chris, you definitely have it. Counsel, okay, counsel, any comments, questions?
We need a place for Ruth, so who will make y'all?
Thank you.
I have one question. Holly mentioned elected officials. This also would apply to appointed?
Correct, yes, board members.
All right, thank you. Next item of business would be a board appointment for the Ozark Bear County Technological Center Board. Mayor and Holly?
Holly, sure.
Yes, so Dr. Call, Harold Schabel has served on the Texan Advisory Board for many years, but he's phasing some things out and has chosen not to be reappointed. So I expect to meet with Cruz. She is an entrepreneur herself, and this is one of the city at large positions that is ideally a business person from the community, and so of course she owns the Bright Futures Childcare Centers, and she was very interested and excited to be a part of this if you agree with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, members, any comments, questions, or concerns regarding this appointment?
I think you agree.
All right, thank you. Next order of business would be to approve the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Harvest Church here in Ozark. Mayor, you want to comment on that?
Yes, basically what we're doing is extending it at the same rate for another couple of years. They're wanting to do a bunch of work to the building, and then after that point, it will increase 500 a month, and then two more years, 500, and I think it was one more renewal. But anyway, we also have the option that either one of us can basically get out of it and get more. But they've been good tenants and love to keep it running.
Counsel, any comments, questions, or concerns regarding this?
I think it's great.
And they will be making these improvements?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And they're going to provide us invoices showing where they like those improvements.
Thank you.
They're paying 2,500 now a month, and it's gonna go up to 3, 3500 if they have revenue.
Okay, any other comments from the council concerning this lease agreement? Okay, thank you. Next order of business would be to approve a bid award for Project Evergreen Sports Complex land clearing. Mayor?
Yes, we got the bids in weeks ago, and Hilton Cooper was a low bidder at $385,000, and we'd recommend that we approve that bid when we get started over there.
Counsel, any comments, questions, or concerns regarding this bid award for Project Evergreen? Well, Mayor, the only thing I can say is that this bid is in an amount of $385,000, and I know it's this same contractor who had given us a previous estimate in the $500,000 range, if I make no mistake, a little over a month ago, almost too much.
Well, I don't remember exactly what his price was, but...
We're close to that, maybe.
405.
Right.
We took the part of the...
That's right. I was wondering what led to the redoubt.
Yes, yep.
I just have some concerns about spending this amount of money at this particular time. We have so many other concerns in the city, particularly just weeks ago, we confronted with repairing garbage trucks, the biggest thing I hear throughout the city as I get around is potholes, you know, not picking up my garbage, you know, sitting by the road for weeks at a time. And so I just have some concerns about we as a council spending this type of money on a project of this magnitude that we in all likelihood will never see time to fruition as, as a council during this administration.
We don't permit it.
Well, we only have about six more meetings before administration comes in, but so I just think our primary concern is always, number one, is safety, you know, neighbors taking care of the, or providing the services for the citizens of Ozark. And when we run, come short of providing those services, you know, then it's on us.
I was going to cover this in my closing comments.
Right.
I provided y'all this list here in 1975 when Mayor Council built the Civic Center. Same kind of controversy. Folks didn't want to build it. They had division, they jumped out there, they spent $2 million in 1975. That was huge at an interest rate of seven to seven, seven to three-quarter percent on their bond that they did then. But if you read this and you look at the things I've said to y'all before and the things that Holly has said, the same justification for building a civic center is the same justification for building a sports complex, what it does for growth in our city and economic growth. And we, we're in good shape financially. We can do this, and it'll make a tremendous difference in this city.
Well, I can't say that we're in good shape financially when we have directors that come for us seeking expenditures for items that they don't have in their budget. The funding is not there, and we have to dip in our reserves to repair garbage trucks, you know?
Weston, a budget is just a gag.
You're talking about everybody. Everybody has a budget.
We have $4 million in reserves. That's the most the city's ever had in probably its history. We're in good shape financially.
Weston, I guess I'm confused because for 15 years, you've been willing to build sports complexes. They're not gonna give it to us.
Everyone I talked to up there when we were at the conference in hospital, the other cities that did these things, and they are seeing it pay dividends with bringing the teams into play, with the revenue that brings in, you get all these people coming to town, they're spending money in restaurants, hotels. I mean, and it's just paying dividends. I mean, you talk to these other cities that do these things, and it's like very, very, very positive. So that's just my take on it, you know? Talking to similar cities, our size that do these things.
We get talked to every day about having something for the children to do, nowhere to go, nothing to do. Well, this is for children, 90% of them. I mean, I don't, I don't understand what the problem is.
Well, and the other thing is the facilities we have right now, are we upkeeping, providing upkeep on them? When we look at Old Nitter Park, we look at Steedall, only many things of those exist that are still existing. But with that in mind, I just want to clarify my concerns about it. At this time, we will go back and we will ask, is there anyone as far as our department heads that has any comments concerning these agenda items? Any comments from the floor concerning any of these agenda items that we just went over? Are there any comments, questions, or concerns from anyone concerning any subject not on the agenda?
Hey there, I'm Shiswana. The park that was put in on East and Eufaula?
Right.
Was the neighborhood contacted or the churches to expand the entertainment district?
Mayor, you wanna come in on that?
To my knowledge, not, they were not contacted.
Okay, 'cause I own a house right next to it. And my concern is trash, 'cause I already pick up cubs all over the town.
That is on Magnolia East, we thought, right?
Just a point I was putting out there.
Right, and it's mostly trash, you say?
Yep.
Not from there.
And I'm sure the church is a lot of them.
Right.
Maybe there's Saturday night, there was no trash, or Friday night, there was no trash.
There's stuff being dropped on Sunday morning. I know we do outside the shop.
We do. There's...
Okay, let's come up to the podium, state your name, and then make your comment.
So I believe that Mrs. Ellison took some pictures of drill weekend, which was for me, what, last weekend? And I don't know if it was a city worker, but it was a city truck, a blue tag, picking up trash and throwing it down the gutter, down the drain system. So I know, I don't think that's how you, you know, dispose of trash, anytime you pick it up, whether it's on a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, or Saturday night. This day it just commented, you know, there wasn't no trash Saturday night, but Sunday when it comes, there's trash, whether it's from homeless people, whether it's just people passing by and probably throwing it out the window. But that stuff should be notified. I guess the church is in, whoever lives there, if it's, I guess, Mr.? Mr. Who? Well, Mr. Layer, but no, I'm talking about the city guy who lives on that street. So listen, he doesn't have to be notified, but I know Mr. Layer from the church, I think you would like him notified, primitive better church. I'm pretty sure they don't do any alcohol at all.
Okay, thank you. The Ryan Campbell is not here, can you come in regarding the street sanitation department? But I do have one concern, and I voiced it concerning that Magnolia Park as well. Last night I came by there, and it was after 8:00, and we have the bright lights shining when no one is there. You have people in this community who cannot afford to pay their electric bill, and a lot of businesses. But the city, we're burning those lights, you know, and so I don't think it's necessary to burn them when no one is there. Electricity costs are too expensive to be wasteful with it. Any other comments concerning Magnolia East?
Yes, I'll make one comment.
Okay.
I think it looks 100% better than it did when it was grown up and homeless people living there, and they was asking us to clean up the trash and get it out of there, and there they have landscape. I would, I would thank somebody if I had a house near the door to it cleaned up and it's pretty.
I'm not saying anything different about that, because it looked really nice when Ron had his, his business there one time. He cleaned it up, and it looked fabulous. So I applaud that. I don't like trash, and I don't know what's gonna happen if people are out there drinking. That's my concern.
I understand.
'Cause I own a house right next to it.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to say the bulbs, they're LED bulbs.
Then, uh, you're running that business?
It doesn't have less much. It's not my experience, really, whatever. I'm gonna speak to both of those matters.
Okay, wait a minute. We had Mr.?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
He was here first, and so I gotta address him. I wanted to wait till after all the comments were in concerning Magnolia East, though. Any other comments from the council committee in Magnolia? No other comments from the floor?
Yes.
Okay, now, Mr. Harris, go ahead.
I wanna speak about Magnolia East also.
Okay, go ahead.
As a part of Ozark 101, we toured, hey, Magnolia Park. And one of the things I pointed out during that tour was there's no way for the handicapped to get into that park. It's restricted in there to some element. You can use wheelchairs and whatever. But coming through those two entrances, you can't. We've tried going through there with a three-wheel scooter. We've tried going there through it with electric wheelchair. One of those two entrance ways should be a hard surface so you can get across it, okay? And this weekend, I witnessed some people trying to take a two-hand cart loaded with Yeti coolers and stuff in there for some kind of event that's going on, and because you can't go straight, one wheels up, one wheels down, you kept falling off the two-hand cart. One of those two entryways needs to be a sidewalk-type entryway. And I would suggest it to be one on the east, 'cause it's clear the shortage of smallest and be less expensive for the city. But right now, handicapped can't get access to that park.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris.
And let us say, Ron is aware of that, and he's looking at it.
All right, thank you. Okay, now, Mayor?
I'm really with him. In terms of litter, I think it is not a city problem, it is a citizen problem, and until you demand more from the people that live here, you will never have clean streets. If you go down Harris Road, it looks like a dump. It is disgusting. And, I mean, just period. You've got to demand more for your citizens. You can't always just expect the city fix every problem. Each person has to be accountable for themselves and clean up behind themselves. It's really easy to hit traction, and it's not that hard. But to have mattresses and appliances and all of that stuff pushed over on the, you know, off the edge of the rideaway going down Harris Road, I mean, those are obviously either the owners of those properties or the tenants. So it would not be hard to find out who's accountable or should be held accountable. That's up to trash, period. Just have to say.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Anyone else?
Yes, I, 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 I'm sorry, this, what?
Don't go ahead.
We have trash trucks everywhere. Everybody knows the person involved, but for those that don't, sorry. But we have trash trucks that are supposed to come by and pick up those items off the side of the road, because when a landlord has something move out of a house, they have to clean out the house. That's where the trash goes, is on the rideaway. That's where they are supposed to clean it up. And you are supposed to keep your limbs separate from your household trash. And we have trucks that are supposed to come pick it up. I had a neighbor across the street, they moved out. Their landlord put the stuff out on the side of the road. It's still sitting there. This has been weeks. So, I mean, I understand, we only have so many trash trucks coming by, we have a fairly good-sized city. It takes time. So unfortunately, this is what happens. And part of Harris Road isn't even in the city limits. So you go so far down Harris Road, and it hits county.
When it's on entries.
Our city's not responsible for that, unfortunately.
You can see it for entries.
Okay, thank you.
I just, we got far called at worst of our best. They work on Saturdays even. They're getting out, they're getting out. It's definitely...
'Cause they work out on Saturday. And the neighbor who couldn't have words.
Okay, any other comments or concerns? Okay, Ms. Wood?
To direct, you know, directly to you in terms of the lighting. The lighting was one of my concerns, too, because I know I pay two power bills, it's not always easy. But if you've ever flown in from the north and landed in Tallahassee, it is the best way to be seen, and when you fly over is to have it lit. I mean, it's great to let people know where you're at. That is the cheapest, you know, marketing you could ever ask for.
And these lights are LED lights, too, which is very, very cost-efficient to get on the lights.
Thank you, but no one is landing near there.
No, if you fly in, you started your descent, you can see.
You can see it on WTPY's news.
Absolutely.
And there's a little camera, and it shines all the way. You can see a little bit, but I had looked at it.
Yeah, I understand. It's just a concern I have regarding people in the city that don't have the money to pay the rent, to look at that and see the waste. Yes.
Ron, yes?
Right.
So what would be the price? Just, I know, I attended the same class that Mr. Aigal in, she did in Beverly. So what would be the price compared to a dump truck to the $485,000 that is required to clear out that land? What is the difference there? If we, if it was to purchase a new dump truck to actually pick up the trash, 'cause I know what the Beverly said, there's tracks and also a track, what the other lady said about, you know, you can drive down Sharon Road so much that visually it's not part of the city, but it's part of the county. But if you drive on Eufaula Street, there's been a bed that's been at least two and a half weeks that's been on Eufaula Street on the, on the rideaway, which I don't know if it was there today, but I know it was there yesterday. So I'm just asking, what would be the difference of, you know, how much is it done compared to the $485,000 land here?
It's 380.
Well, uh...
Well, 380.
Right. Ryan Campbell is not here, that's all. He's the director of that department, so I'm gonna let the mayor speak to that.
I don't think you can compare buying one truck to pick up trash to do a sports complex. A sports complex is going to generate revenue. We already have companies looking to come here because we want to do that sports complex.
And I might ask... And I might add, there were some comments at the previous council meeting concerning the sports complex, uh, from council members. It was mentioned by one, uh, keep dipping into the reserves, another mentioned that we would have to do a bond issue. And I, I just want the citizens to be aware of that. If, if this council, or if the incoming council do a bond issue or a sports complex, it's up to the citizens, not five council members or the mayor, to decide that that's what you want, because you are putting your children, grandchildren into debt for the next, maybe twenty-five, thirty years before that bond issue would ever be paid off. So, that's not, that's not a matter for your six elected officials to just say, we're going to do it in spite of what the citizens may or may not want. A good example was, uh, some years ago, which most of you are aware of, the school system was confronted with building a new school here in the city of Ozark. They had seven, uh, I don't know, maybe three, uh, public hearings, if you will, or the pararecreation center. They passed out little ballots for people to vote for or against, and also for the location, whether they wanted, whether the citizens wanted it in the existing location or built back in the, uh, in a new location, which would actually be out where the property is, that the sports complex is to be built upon. And Joe Adams, our Southern Star editor, wrote it, he brought it up after the votes came in. Uh, it was similar to fifty-four percent of the citizens wanted that school built back in the existing location, and you had that forty-six percent or so of citizens that wanted it built in the new location out of 231. So, the citizens that wanted it built out of 231 lost, and it was built back in the existing location because the majority wanted it searched. So, uh, that's a good example of how, you know, how good it worked, good or bad, you may think in that case. But, uh, but, but we need, surely if the, if the city can hold a public hearing on demolishing properties that's only costing a few thousand dollars, we can surely allow citizens input in the form of a public hearing on spending millions of dollars on sports complexes. So, with that in mind, are there any?
Before you leave that, I got one comment. In 2004, this city council did not hold a public hearing. They built a four-million-dollar city hall that we still owe money on today. We still owe money. And it didn't generate one penny of revenue, didn't bring a single additional person to the city of Ozark, unlike the sports complex we have.
I wasn't on the council at that time, so.
Well, and I wasn't either, but we were still, we're still responsible for that debt.
As a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, after they did that, they got in such financial strains, that's when we went from an eight to a nine percent sales tax. I remember it very well.
Well, we, I do remember that, and the city went from eight to nine. Uh, and let me just elaborate on that also. The, the school board, your superintendent at the time, they came before the council. They wanted the one-cent sales tax increase so that they could give the school. Doakon was already at nine, we were at eight. We could in no way, shape, or form go from eight to ten, because then our sales taxes would have been greater than Doakon. So, we elected to go from eight to nine. We couldn't give the school board the one percent, because we needed money for the city employees and, and equipment, things of that nature. So, we ended up, the city took a half cent and the school system took a half cent of that one-cent increase. And that's what we're using, we're using a half cent that we're giving to the school system right now to pay off the bond issue for the school. Okay, are there any other comments or concerns before we reach this, uh, from the council or anyone in the audience? Please state your name and.
I'm Zeromar. I was wondering, uh, with the sports complex that you was talking about, what all sports were playing in there?
We don't know that exactly. What we gotta do is, when we get our toco done, we'll figure out, uh, what areas we have that we can level, how large they are, and then we'll sit down and, and we'll get some input on that and what we need. But we're at a minimum baseball, soccer, uh, uh, football, softball, I mean, and then there'll be some other things that can be filled in as well.
The reason why I asked, because when I, um, we used to go up there to Stigall like every, every weekend in the slow around this time, and, uh, now we can't even go up there because it's like a park, it's like the concrete, it's all messed up, lights won't come on at night. And, uh, I called the city one day, and I asked them, I was like, y'all come up here and, um, fix the, the lights. And he was like, well, we can't come in and fix the lights right now because some, some, some odd reason, I don't know. But, um, I asked them to kind of like do like a fundraiser. He was like, yeah, it's fine, you can do it, but, um, you just have to call us before you do it.
What, what field were you playing on?
I was, was playing that, um, Stigall Park.
But which?
Basketball. Basketball.
Well, their lights should be mashing long, because they should be working.
It didn't, it didn't off the light.
And they put the LEDs in there.
They were, yeah, they were in the ice cone, they, they could think about that.
Yeah, we had to use the, um, tennis lights. We had to hop the gate to use the, um, tennis lights to pull cash and see if they go, or ramble, so. Just wondering.
Thank you for coming, of course.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns from anyone in the audience?
Hi, Elizabeth Chisler. I wanted to apologize for outbursting earlier, but I am very passionate about the trash around town, especially with expanding the entertainment district. I do attend Flory Miller's Spreader Back to Church. I really like this church. Mostly the older group attend there, and I know that every Sunday morning I'm consistently picking up cups that say "Happened Times" in light of Harlow's from outside the coffee shelf, which I have for years, and I have lots of picture proof in case people don't believe me. It's just, it's kind of archy, it's inappropriate, and I don't want to be picking that up outside of Flory Miller's Church. I don't, just old people have to either. Like, it's very inappropriate. So, I just feel like if we can do better by enforcing that, I understand it's not a city problem, maybe it's more of a business problem, um, but I just think it's kind of disappointing that I get to have it picked up. And I knew the Sunday there was a cup there, and I just waited, I was like, maybe, maybe somebody else is gonna pick up. It was still there Monday morning, it was still there through Monday evening while other business people walked around. So, I just wanna make sure that's pointed out and out in the open so people understand if we expand the entertainment district, there will inevitably be more trash.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, uh, can you get Brad and you all address that? Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions, or concerns from anyone in the audience or any council member?
I got some stuff I need to go.
Okay, now we'll, uh, start with the mayor, any comments?
All right, we'll let y'all know that we did get the elevator and the Holman House installed. Uh, we're waiting right now to get a phone line hooked up, and it'll be up and operating. We're continuing to work on the development across the Aviation College. Uh, we're looking at doing some rezoning there for them. The tennis court work stalled because they got to a certain point, but they're supposed to get started back next week. The ECorp purchase of the property, uh, Joe is, is working on that as we speak, so hopefully that'll be done before long. Getting back to the Magnolia Gardens, uh, we are going to need to put some signage up in there that says "No Coolers," uh, something along the lines of "You must purchase alcohol from one of the local vendors," and, uh, you know, "Must be in a cup," and that kind of thing. Where there's some local, there's some communities around us that they don't do that. They let people bring coolers in, and we've already had some, we had a big event down there Friday night, and it was pretty obvious they, they did it very innocently. They didn't realize it, but we do need to put some signage up that directs that. Also, we talked about making one to go in each one of our establishments that says, "You can only take these cups and go in this area." And lay that out as a map to where people, you know, walking out of there with a glass will know that. But if y'all got any input on that that you'd like to tell us about, I'd be glad to, I'll try to address that. Didn't want to let you know that we lost a former employee this week, Mr. Mark Little, and his visitation, you know, it's four-thirty tomorrow night at Fuquay Blanks and Funeral Home. And at this time, I want to do another little, I didn't have it on, didn't have any time to put it on the, on the presentation, but, uh, this is a part of the project from the most recent Ozark 101 class, where their project was to create a meetup spot for internet purchases and custody exchanges of children and that kind of thing. So, what we're going to do is basically, they're gonna put a sign up out here someplace close to the police entrance, and we're gonna stripe the parking lot in green and put cameras on it where we can, uh, you know, monitor what goes on out there, but give people a place to do that. And Ms. Brittany Gallin, this was her idea, and she also designed the sign, but we wanted to get all of the people that are here from 101 class to come up and let's get a picture of this, uh, before we put it up.
Don't make me take a picture alone.
Mr. Ball, I can't see you.
That didn't work.
In one second.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you so much. I found out that you can also, you can put it on Google Maps so that you can tell, because I buy a lot of stuff online, so whenever you go, hey, can you get this lot, you can just send the Google location, and then they know where. And if they say no, then, then you know it's a question.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
That's all I had, listen.
Okay, uh, councilman Ed there?
Uh, just gonna tell, we've got, there's a children's play at Vile Center this weekend, right in Saturday at six-thirty. Uh, the children are doing the Wizard of Oz. Uh, they practiced real, real hard. You know, Ms. Margie, she's been putting on a good one. So, y'all would try to come support and assist.
Let me go back and get one thing. Starting tomorrow, uh, no, Thursday, we have seventy-five girls softball teams gonna be in town, gonna be playing out at East Gate and the Stray Off. So, if y'all get a chance, uh, go by there, check that out. I think we got every hotel in the state.
All right, thank you. Uh, councilman Barrow?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm the president of the One Eagle Foundation. Here's here with our OZRC schools. Uh, we're looking forward to, gonna have a fundraiser event coming up. And just be on the lookout when we, we put that out there, uh, and what the funds we raised to that will help our teachers and our students now. And the teachers can apply for, for grants they can use on projects and their classrooms and stuff, and, uh, it'll benefit our OZRC school students. So, looking forward to getting that coming. So, just be on the lookout for that.
Councilwoman Carlo?
Uh, on behalf of Ms. Semencheck, she couldn't be here. I'm supposed to announce the Wish Upon a Star Summer Concert, that's June the seventeenth. Is that in the, at the Spark Theater Company, not in Dyson? So, we want to be sure that we support her and her, um, band and choir adverts to raise money for, excuse me, for Carol High School's choral clubs.
Okay, thank you. And the only thing I have is that on June nineteenth, which is this Thursday, there will be a Juneteenth celebration downtown Ozark from three to six, and everyone is invited. Okay, thank you.
One more thing. Tomorrow morning at eleven o'clock, we're going to sign the proclamation for that down at the front door. Uh, that was their request to do it down there.
For the Juneteenth celebration. Okay, all right, thank you.
That's at the Ozark Amphitheater, where it's gonna take place at. That's, that's supposed to be, to make the Thursday.
Yes, the Juneteenth, right. Now, well, they'll be all around the courthouse, they're gonna be selling things. Well, they won't be selling, I think it's free, free drinks, free food, you know, that type of thing. But it'll be, uh, set up different vendors, I guess, with the understanding they gave us. Okay, with that in mind, uh, we will end our administrative meeting, and we will begin the voting session of our council meeting in three minutes. Okay, we will now begin our voting portion of the city council meeting. I will give the prayer, followed by the mayor with the pledge of belief. Let us bow. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness and your love and kindness. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the many blessings you bestowed upon us. Heavenly Father, we ask you your continued blessings upon this city, bless our state, and bless our federal government. Lord, be with us as we make decisions that impact the lives of the citizens. And Lord, we just ask you to continue to keep us in your care. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business would be to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting here on June the third, two thousand and twenty-five. What are the wishes of the council?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the speaking.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
In the discussion. All in favor, let it be known by a sign aye?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carry. Next item will be to set the agenda. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Vice President, I move that we set the agenda as presented.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Then move in proper sequence that we set the agenda as presented. All in favor, let it be known by a sign aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Next item would be a ordinance for the rezoning of 314 Bingham Street from I-1 to R-25. What are the wishes of the council? To R-5. What are the wishes of the council?
I moved we approve an ordinance, the rezoning of 314 Bingham Street from I-1 to R-5, and move for its approval.
We have a motion to approve this ordinance. We have a second?
Second.
In the discussion. All in favor, let it be known by a sign aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Next item would be a resolution for the declaration of properties with dangerous buildings, a public nuisance. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Vice President, I introduce an ordinance.
Resolution?
I introduce a resolution for declare, declaration of properties with dangerous buildings and public nuisance as follows. 717 Bermuda Street, 245 Atlas Street, 8 Franklin Avenue, 318 Westview Drive, 597 Uphaul Street, and move for its adoption.
We have a motion on the floor for these properties. We have a second?
Second.
In the discussion. All in favor, let it be known by a sign aye?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carry. Next item would be a first reading application, 010 Lounge Retail Liquor Class One and 990 Tobacco Only, applicant cloud 334 LLC, trade name cloud 334, 130 North Court Street, Ozark owner, Kimmy D. Griffin, 188 Living Drive. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the first reading of application 010 Lounge Retail Liquor Class One and 990 Tobacco Only, for the applicant cloud 334 LLC, move for its adoption.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
In the discussion. All in favor, let it be known by a sign aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carry. Next item will be to approve a $13,000 Alabama Tourism Department Legislative Grant for Ozark Crawdad and Music Festival and Claybank Jamboree Arts and Crouch Festival. What are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion, we approve the $13,000 Alabama Tourism Department Legislative Grant for Ozark Crawdad Music Festival and the Claybank Jamboree Arts and Crouch Festival and move for it's approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve this grant, is there a second?
Second.
In the discussion. All in favor, let it be known by a sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Next item is a resolution for conflicts of interest, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Vice President, I introduce a resolution for conflicts of interest and move for its adoption.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
In the discussion. All in favor, let it be known by a sign aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carry. Next item will be a board appointment for Ozark Del County Technology Center Board. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Vice President, I move that we appoint Ms. Tamika Cruz to the, uh, Board for Ozark Del County Economic and Development. Or Ozark, oh my gosh, I'm making those rumors too. It's for Del County Technology Center Board.
We have a motion on the board, this board appointment, do we have a second?
Second.
In the discussion. All in favor, let it be known by a sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Next item will be to approve the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Harvest Church. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the mayor to execute a lease with agreement with Harvest Church, Ozark, move for its adoption.
We have a motion on the floor to approve this lease agreement, do we have a second?
Second.
In the discussion. All in favor, let it be known by a sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Next order of business will be to approve a bid award for Project Evergreen Sports Complex Land clearing. And I will relinquish the gavel to Councilwoman Polo and step down for this vote.
Does that mean I can't vote?
No, you just preside. Carry the motion.
Wait, does that mean I can't vote?
Me, you can't vote. If you're presiding, you cannot vote.
What's he doing that for?
Because I'm going to, uh, vote again.
Well, that's fine.
I relinquish the gavel for my career. That's, that's the.
Okay, so.
Carry the motion.
Do I have a motion to approve the bid award, Project Evergreen Sports Complex Land Clearing?
I have heard that you said to approve a bid award to Project Evergreen Sports Complex for land cleared and move for its approval.
A second.
Okay, having a motion and a second, do, we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye, opposed.
So two approve one day, three approve one day.
She can vote, you can vote.
I think I can vote, Brenda votes.
You can't, there's not a tie.
That's right, necessary. It carries, the motion carries.
Motion carries. I've never had to do that before. You did great.
With that, uh.
They didn't teach you that in council school.
Are there any questions or comments, uh, from the mayor?
I'm good.
Any from council members? Councilwoman Robb? Then I take, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by a sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Thanks for coming and have a good evening.